I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will we call the roll, please?
Mayor Knutson.
Here.
District one, Morsette.
Here.
District two, Yaku.
Here.
District three, Bernard.
Here.
District four, Wyland.
Here.
District five, O'Malley.
Here.
District six, Virchell.
Here.
Okay, at this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's anyone here who'd like to address the council tonight on any item that's not on the agenda tonight, that that might be an item of interest or come before the council at a future time, anything that might impact the city of Hudson or that the council might address at a future meeting, this is a time for you to come forward and speak. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council tonight? Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda items. Would you read those, please?
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of July 19th, 2010. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $379,971.15. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of nine regular operators licenses for the period August 3rd, 2010 to June 30th, 2012, and the issuance of six temporary operators licenses to be used during the St. Patrick's Fall Festival, October 1st through 3rd, 2010. Additional information is available from the clerk's office on request. To approve the installation of a street sign on the southeast corner of Trillium Way and Foxglove Way to be funded from the developers' reserve fund for such improvements. To designate parking restrictions in the parking lot at 701st Street, no parking, from 2:30 a.m. to 4:30 a.m., and also no boat trailer parking. To place on file the quarterly report of the city clerk, the unapproved community access board minutes of July 27th, 2010, and the joint fire board minutes of July 14th, 2010. That is all.
Okay. That motion to approve. The consent agenda from Mr. Wyland.
Second.
Second. I guess I heard Lori first. Roll call.
Morsette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
All right, so the consent agenda is approved. Let's move on to the plan commission items. The first is to consider amending the conditional use permit for the Red Cedar Canyon planned residential development to add two one-family residential lots, abutting the proposed northerly extension of Bayberry Court, increasing the number of one-family lots in that area from 13 to 15. The applicant is Hans Hagen Homes. Thank you.
Committee recommendations, the plan commission recommends to approve the request by Hans Hagen Homes to amend the conditional use permit for the Red Cedar Canyon planned residential development to add two one-family residential lots within the area of the proposed northerly extension of Bayberry Court, increasing total number of lots from 13 to 15. It was a public hearing held with the plan commission on July 22nd. I believe there were three people present. Only Mr. John Rask from Hans Hagen Homes commented. Mr. Rask is here tonight answering questions that he may have. Essentially, it adds two one-family lots in that frontage of the proposed Bayberry North extension, Court, northerly extension, but would still keep the lots at the minimum 65 feet that generalists proposed or suggested in the master plan back in 2000. Again, plan commission recommends approval.
Any questions? Move for approval. There's a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Well, Mr. Rask's brief, the brief version is that as the economy and the housing demand changes, there seems to be demand for more house and slightly less lot. Did I say it about right?
Sure.
And that's what we're accomplishing here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion's approved. Let's move on to number two, the final plat for Red Cedar Canyon, Bayberry Court East, nine one-family residential lots, abutting the proposed northerly extension of Bayberry Court, north of East Canyon Drive, Hans Hagen Homes.
And the committee recommendation is, the plan commission recommends approval of the final plat of Red Cedar Canyon, Bayberry Court East, which is nine one-family residential lots, with the condition the development agreement be executed by Hans Hagen Homes in the city of Hudson, and surety is provided for 125 percent of estimated construction value, street and utility cost prior to recording of the plat. And this essentially implements the modification of the conditional use permit that was just approved by the common council. The total area will be 15 lots, however, this initial phase of that, of the number of lots on that street frontage will be nine, where they come in with six in the second phase or some other number, we'll wait and see, but this does implement the first nine of those lots.
Move to approve pending completion of the developer's agreement with the city and the surety that needs to be taken care of for proposed cost.
All right, so there's a motion. Second. A second. Any discussion? Anything further to add? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, it's approved. Start building homes. All right. Next, we're going to go to the finance committee. Consider options for finance officer position. After some discussion, you've got your recommendation here from Devon where he laid out two different options. And we discussed this. Would you like to go through it at all again?
Maybe a brief, a brief rundown. Option one would be the obviously filling of position, making modifications to the job description, which has not been updated since Betty was hired in 1999. The second option would be to, in the interim here, the accountant and I have covered Betty's duties. The other option would be to, through the end of the year, is what we're recommending, is that Kathy and I continue to do that. We have a temporary person in here helping with utility billing, that we utilize that person to do some of the data entry type things that Kathy would do, then Kathy then would have more time to do. We'd be kind of shifting some duties around between the three of us. And I kind of laid that out on the chart here. The reason I suggested that if we're going to go with that option, we just do it through the end of the year is to, this is a little bit slower time in the finance during the summer here, and we don't want to make a commitment, say absolutely, positively, we can handle it or do it until we've had a chance to see if we can do it. As I told the finance committee, if we get to September or October and we're completely overwhelmed, we'll certainly be back and tell you that, but we thought this would be an option to consider from a capabilities standpoint. You know, the staff can handle it, it's just the big issue will be, of course, will be the time allotment involves.
So the recommendation from the finance committee was to go with option two, and then at budget time, we would make a determination at that time whether we would have the existing staff continue or whether we would move then to fill the finance officer position. And the difference between the two would be if we went with option one right now, we'd probably have a two to three month period before we had someone in place. If we go with option two, made a new decision in November or whenever the case may be, we might have something like five to six months with a vacancy. And I think the consensus of the finance committee was that might be worth trying for a few months.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
At the time that you were going to take this up, I'm okay with, you know, waiting to fill the position, but you're adding one, two, three, four, five, six, seven more tasks to one of the clerks.
That was discussed at, right, that was discussed at finance. Kathy and I have had this discussion that through the end of the year, we'll just, you know, whatever, and as far as my position, you know, this would become part of my position, but as far as the clerical staff, because we would then have to address at that time whether the new duties would have us address a reclassification for her position. And the other thing I would like to mention is that if you went with option two on a permanent basis, then you would then be probably be looking at hiring three-quarter time or somebody up, a permanent, because the temporary position's only through the end of the year, or the temporary help, whether it be, and we'd address that at that time, whether it be a half-time, three-quarter time to do the data entry position.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Next from the finance committee was to consider proceeding to fill a vacancy in the second floor receptionist slash account clerk position. And you have your issue sheet. There were, again, some discussion here, and the recommendation of finance committee is that we have more staff input and to direct Devon to look at this further for the next two weeks, and to look specifically if there are ways to utilize other existing clerks within City Hall, which we've got customer service, receptionist, and clerk positions up on the third floor as well as second floor. And the goal is to try to have the best customer service with the most streamlined, efficient structure. And honestly, we had some ideas that came out in our discussion that really hadn't had staff review. And so I like for there to be time for staff review and staff input, so we're just asking for two more weeks. Mary Kay's retirement is effective October 6th, so we should have time to study this a little further. So our motion was to just postpone that to the next. I'm not sure we need any action here. We kept it at finance and we'll bring it back, but just to give you an update on that. Next is the DNR grant. DNR grant requirements for recording of deed restrictions regarding our Prospect Park grant that we received for just over $50,000 a couple of years ago. There are some deed restrictions that we need to get in place before we can collect the second half of the grant. This can be changed, and we had some discussion about how we could, if future councils chose to want to use that park for something different, there are some means in place through the DNR to have these restrictions lifted. We had some discussion about that, but for now, we have no other plans for it, and so we might as well collect our other half of the grant. Move for approval.
Move to suspend the rules.
Yeah.
There's a motion to suspend the rules and a second towards adoption of resolution 14-10. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Morsette?
No.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
All right, so the rules have been suspended towards adopting resolution 14-10. Move to adopt 14-10.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt. So just to go through what this is about is that the old hospital site at Prospect Park went into private hands after the hospital left. City ultimately bought the land back for the cost of about a million dollars. Later, there was an application for a grant, and there's an annual funding cycle for these grants. The one year, we had received a grant of half a million dollars, but we did not do what it took to collect the money. They have a number of hoops. First, you have to have a proper appraisal and so on and so forth. We didn't do what needed to be done. By the time it got done, the grant wasn't available anymore. We reapplied the next time, and the next time, we got $50,000. The way they do this is that there are various hoops, so they'll give you the first part, then you have to do what they require to get the second part. What this is doing is it's saying that this can, there can be nature activities, but you can't use that park land. This six acres, I believe it was six acres that we bought. Parts of Prospect Park has been owned by the city for a long time, but the big, flat, open area that used to have the hospital, that six acres, can't be used for ball fields or, I don't know the terminology, but sort of sports-related park activities.
Has to be passive.
It has to be passive recreation is the term. Unless, we would either pay back the $50,000, which we could do at any time and have these restrictions removed, or they told us that we could substitute or create a passive park somewhere else in the city of comparable size, and then they'd put the restrictions on that and remove the restrictions here. And at finance committee, we were talking about options. There is a park that we just established that we intend to be a passive park that probably would be very suitable for that. That would require discussions with the DNR, some legal work. We don't need to get into that for now. I think we should just go ahead and approve the resolution, take the money. There's options for how we can change it, and they're willing to work with us for the future. So, any questions about that?
Just one comment. My objection to this is, was noted when we first approved or we voted on taking the money, and I don't like the restrictions being our places on us, and I realize we can move it. I'm still, I still don't like speeding controls or somewhat tied by the restrictions that the DNR is putting on us, so again, I'll be voting no.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passed five to one, resolution's adopted. Number seven, review bids and consider awarding contract for the 2010 Street Improvements project. We had discussion at the finance committee, and to take numbers seven, eight, and nine somewhat together, I'll refer you to, oh, I've got a spreadsheet on an Excel-style spreadsheet. Where is it? This one?
No.
There it is, on the bottom of the stack. So if you look at, this one gives you kind of a nice summary of everything that we're talking about. This spreadsheet that at the top says Public Works Bonding Projects. Approved bonding amounts are there, and the next column over is the bid amount, base bids. The next column over is engineering and contingencies. Next, there's grinding. Next, there's the, what's it say, ATIF process?
Eurode.
Eurode process. If I had my glasses, but I think the euro is missing. Okay, so the idea here is that we're going to talk about these three as a group first and then probably approve them each separately. If you look at that top part, you can see that we budgeted for $405,000, and if we approve these bids with the various contingencies and base and alternates and so on, as we're going to talk about here, that basically puts those at $405,680. The, here's how we get there. For the seal coating, it's a little confusing. We've got Chuck here to answer technical questions and Tom Zulley, but essentially, we're going to use the trap rock. By using the trap rock, we need a little less oil. By using less oil, we're going to be able to reduce the cost slightly from what was originally estimated. And the bottom line then is, the finance committee recommendation is to approve Farner Asphalt to approve their base bid of $99,008, to approve their alternate A, to approve their alternate D, less stage line road, and for a total approval of $174,991.80. Along with this comes the finance committee's recommendation, and the staff is assuring us that this can be done, that because we're choosing the trap rock and maybe some other technical issues, we're going to be able to use less oil and lower the cost, and so we simultaneously are recommending that the budget for this process be lowered to Essentially, we want to approve the, awarding the bid and make it not to exceed $174,991.80 with the flexibility for staff to adjust quantities in conjunction with the contractor. And by doing so, we're going to ask staff to get the price down to $163,321. Did I sum that up okay? Any questions or comments on this one or any one of the three?
Go ahead.
I had one question about the trap rock, which I'd forgotten to ask at finance, and that is, is there any difference in longevity between using or not using trap rock?
Actually, that's why we're going with the trap rock, it's one of the harder of the three alternates, it's the hardest rock and has the longest word.
Thank you.
I do not know if the committee's proposed budget of $163,000 was dependent upon the original numbers, but the original numbers are not correct. $99,006,000 is 105 plus 74, it is not 174, it's 179,000.
Minus the 76.
Do you see the minus stage line is?
So the, yes, but that still came out to 74,000.
Mr. Mayor, if I could address that?
Yeah, can you explain?
Yeah, what it is, it's a typo. The bottom line number is correct, the 174, and what you have is, there were, there were three stage line items under alternate A for a total of, I'm sorry, you have that number down. $11,990.
Yeah.
Okay? Which brings that number down to 69.
720.
So yeah, it's a typo.
The bold line that says alternate D, less stage line, the bid amount shouldn't be 74 for that subunit, it should be 69.
69, 728.8.
Well, that's a good catch, Mr. O'Malley.
Yes.
Thank you.
He's right though, right Chuck? I mean, it's wrong on the sheet here.
It is, it's, yeah, there's, those two line items.
The bottom line of the decision and the recommendation that you made and the finance made isn't affected by that typo.
Yeah, the 174, 98, 1.8 is correct.
All right. So we're probably ready to go ahead and approve awarding this bid. Unless you want to have discussion of any one of the three ahead of time to let you have, let's step back and look at the big picture, why don't we just go through each one of them before we approve any of them? Does that make sense? So then on the second portion, this is the mill and overlay for Hagan Street, two bidders, low bidders, Monarch Finance recommended approving $158,524.85.
Plus 5,000 for engineering.
Plus the 5,000 engineering. And I, I didn't mention that for the first one, but that you'd also have to add on 4,000 for, excuse me, engineering and contingencies on the first one for the seal coating, crack filling.
So that'll be 167 then, instead of 163?
Yep.
It would be. And if you look out to the far left on this spreadsheet, you can see where it adds up to 167.
Right.
Got it.
Far right for you.
Got it. And then the third component here is our sidewalk curb and gutter program. And there were four bidders. Willow River Construction is the low, and we recommended awarding that plus two extra services that we'd like to ask them to perform for us.
They're not performing it, that's just.
Who's doing it?
They're unrelated to the contract.
Who's doing the grinding?
It's a company called Say Step.
Okay.
And then the other company that does the Eurotec home lifting that is.
All right, I was, I misunderstood that. I misspoke then. So then the base bid we recommended to approve for Willow River Construction is in the amount of $65,334.75. On this item, discussion revealed that while this brings us to the total of what was budgeted for the three of 405,000, because parts of the sidewalk and curb and gutter are special assessable, and we did budget a revenue line for that, we budgeted low compared to what it's actually coming out, and so our revenue will actually be slightly higher. That varies always because you don't know exactly what will get assessed and who decides what sidewalks to do.
You're speaking of cost sharing, not revenue, right?
It's a.
Comes down to every side of the budget.
It's still a cost sharing with the residents, okay.
Well, City thinks that's right.
Yeah.
Right, it's cost sharing.
I guess.
If there's a slight difference in the bid, does it matter if we go with the first or second lowest?
We do have a procurement policy for small items that allows us the ability if bids are comparable in other ways to go with the local bidder, but under the state law for construction bids over 25,000, you would have to have a real good reason not to go with the low bidder, and just it being a local contractor, is that what you have in mind? Yeah. Is that what you had in mind?
Yeah, I didn't hear what he said.
I think he's saying they're both local anyway, but I was giving you a, for example.
Right, right.
Now, you know, we have a contractor on here that it's been expressed in the past, well, if they were low, do we have to go with them because we've had issues? Well, didn't matter this time because they aren't low. Then the other part of this we need approval on is the grinding, and that's where the sidewalk, I'm sure when the sidewalks start to have a crack and there's a little step there, and that step gets to what, an inch?
More than three-quarters of an inch.
More than three-quarters of an inch. For liability purposes, it's suggested that we fix that, and we used to always just tear it out and pour new, and the last couple of years, we've tried a new process that grinds down the lip. Doesn't last forever, but it saves the homeowners quite a bit of money, because they're the ones who end up paying 50% of having to change, so that, I don't know how that's worked. I'd like to get feedback from the public on that, actually. That was an idea I saw when I was on a campus tour down at University of Wisconsin-Lacrosse, and I said, what have they done with all these sidewalks? And they had been grinding all those little, you know, little bumps and ridges down instead of replacing the sidewalks, so it seems like it makes sense. So that's 3,500. Anyway, okay, so back to the three parts, I guess we, if you don't have questions, or if you do, we've got the people here to answer them, otherwise, we're ready to do some approving.
I'll make a motion to award the 2010 Street Improvement Project to Farner pending agreement to the 163,000 or with the engineering fee, $167,321.
No, it's got to be awarded as it was bid, so it's awarded not to exceed the 174,991.80.
Okay. Plus the four, but then we've. Well, the four is not Farner's concern.
Yeah, so, these are budget issues.
Okay, so we're going to approve spending 174 and hope we get it at 163.
What your staff is telling you is that the quantities, the measurements, square yardage for the seal coat truck was estimated high in the plans and specs, and the actual quantities are likely to be less. So it's not a matter of adjusting anything, it's bid on a unit price, and they're telling you the actual quantities are likely to be less, thereby reducing the contract price.
And I'll just say approve the Farner bid of 174,991.
Yeah, not to exceed that.
Yes.
Second. Any discussion? And then we made it clear to staff that the budget for this has been adjusted to that 163, and that they're not to go over that without having approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, that one's approved. Next, we got a mill and overlay? Yes.
What do we do with the four grand?
Well, that's an internal budget thing, that doesn't really need formal approval. We just brought it there so you can see how we're making the budget come out.
Thank you.
Move to award the mill and overlay project of Monarch Paving with their bid of $158,524.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Got a motion and a second. Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. And that bid is awarded to Monarch. Next, we have sidewalk curb and gutter.
Move awarding the project to Willow River Construction, sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, this side of the room gets in action. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, so that takes care of a lot of summer, fall road construction projects. And, good. Next, that takes us to number ten, which, wait a minute, we did that one on consent. Number eleven, the application of American Safe and Sober Transit LLC for taxicab service license, and the finance committee recommended that we schedule a public hearing for the evening of August sixteenth, our next council meeting.
So moved.
There's a motion, in a second, schedule the hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. That motion passed. Then, we'll go to the backside. Public Works had nothing. Public Safety has a recommendation to consider installation of a stop sign on the northeast corner of Trillium Way at Fox Globe, Globe Way. Make a couple of comments here, and I had, I put a little mayor's recommendation. The city should follow the stop and yield sign policy, which I attached. This was adopted by the city a few years ago. We've had relatively few requests or suggestions for stop signs recently, although it's been a hot topic in the past. Couple of our council members here have been through this. The long and the short of this is that there are some specific criteria, and because I suspect we may be approving this one, but we may not be approving others, I wanted to draw this to your attention and to the attention of the public. So, the criteria in brief are, you have to have a less, one of these, one or more of these. The intersection of a less important road with the main road, or the intersection of a minor street entering a through street. Intersections where there are restricted site distances, or where serious accidents have occurred. Intersections that intercept identified pedestrian routes. Number seven is, or six is a catch-all, I think, where the interest of public safety dictates, ha ha. I think we could maybe drop that one out, but, I mean, everything we do has the interest of public safety in there, so you could, that's, that's not very specific. Number seven is intersections adjacent to facilities such as parks, pools, schools, or other facilities that increase and concentrate pedestrian traffic. And then there's a list of places that we would not normally recommend stop signs. And the one to be pointed out is, we do not normally approve stop signs solely for the purpose of controlling vehicular speed. Part of the reason for that is that we also rely on a publication called the, oh, what's that thing called?
NUZPC.
Yeah, what's it stand for?
The Uniform Control Devices to Save Some Highways.
Annual of Uniform Traffic Control. And which does not recommend that stop signs be used to try to control vehicular speed. And also that you should not place stop signs on major arterials or thoroughfares, which we also have a map which shows which are our major arterials in the city. And oftentimes, we get stop sign requests for those, and those should not generally be placed. I wasn't clear from the committee work on this. I'd like to turn this over then, discussion of this over to the committee chair. But I wasn't clear if there was a police department recommendation on this one, because if there wasn't, that's one part on the stop and yield sign policy. It says that it should be evaluated by City of Hudson Engineering staff, and I believe from the police department. Was that done?
Mr. Mayor, the discussion was, did take place, and we also did talk about the policy that we had. So I want the minutes to reflect that the public safety committee did recommend approval of the stop sign by our policy.
Okay.
And also that, yes, it did go to the police department, which was an agreement.
So the chief of police or the acting chief reviewed it and recommended placement? All right.
There was no objection.
And do you want to make a motion for approval?
Yes.
Second.
In a second, any discussion?
Can I just say that this stop sign, the area where the stop signs we place is also the area where we're placing the stoplight. The street light, I keep saying stop. Yeah, the street light. Mainly, some of the main reasons are, this is where the children in the townhomes there, they cross at that intersection to get to the bus. That's the only exit. That street is the only exit on the Fox Globe. So, I mean, it really meets three of, if you count the public safety interests, it meets four of the seven requirements.
Well, I don't necessarily think, I don't want to interrupt you, but I don't think you have to meet all seven.
No, I know.
Those are the criteria.
Right, one or more. I'm just saying that it more than meets the stop sign.
I think the thing that carried the day at the committee meeting was the, how the intersections, how the streets intersect and the speed at which people are driving through the intersections, and the need for that major road and the minor road meeting, those carried the day in the decision for a stop sign.
I have a question which is really procedural. Melanie's minutes of meeting don't reflect any discussion by anybody from the police department at all. Normally, there would be a discussion of accident history or recommendation from Paul, who's acting chief, in Marty's absence. And the minutes don't reflect that. But, yeah, you say that discussion occurred?
They didn't reflect that. We talked about the stop sign policy either.
So we'll be having the conversation.
Right.
Yeah, that's something that we need.
Absolutely.
We'll talk about that. I mean, there's, there's always a fine line in meeting minutes between, you know, we laugh about it, that you can put down discussion took place and say nothing about the discussion. Or you can have the minutia of every question, every comment, and have it go on for paragraphs, and there's a happy median, medium. Somewhere in there, there are key items. It's sometimes hard for the minute taker to pick out what are the key items. But, I mean, this seemed key. Clearly, we've established that it was covered, so now it's a process thing. I think we can talk about that.
Before the chief, before chief left, I called him and asked him for a copy of the stop sign policy and talked to him about this intersection. So before he even left for the FBI, we had talked about this.
My other question is that, you know, the council, the full council should know how the police department weighed in on this pretty crucial issue, for or against, or any thoughts they had. And the minutes should reflect that.
Okay, we got a motion, second, discussion. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Motion passes. That takes us to update on projects for shorts.
Good evening again. Want to talk a little bit about the two thousand and nine street improvement project. You may have noticed right outside here on Third Street as well as Crestview Drive, Seventeenth, and Laurel, that they, they came in and they redid all those areas that were deficient. And that was some overnight work. I believe they started at, what, ten at night and finished at four in the morning. Also, Scott Construction has agreed to repair the Beadham and Farm area, that seal coat, and that's going to be done with a fog seal. And in addition to the fog seal, there's going to be a coal slag put on top of it as well. And the fog seal can be kind of a slippery application, so that coal slag will allow it, give it some friction and more durability. So, and Scott Construction indicated next week is when that work is going to occur.
Are you going to be out there, is someone going to be out there to hold them accountable?
Yes, yes. And it's, with the fog seal too, there's a curing time, and so it's a little bit of a, if you recall that slurry seal, as far as logistics go, getting information out to the residents and how they're going to do it, and make sure that, you know, there's going to be a period of, say like four hours where they won't be able to drive on it. So, yes, we will be involved, and we'll be working closely with Tom on that.
Okay, any other questions on that one? What else you got?
Not a heck of a lot. You know, we did confirm that the DOT does have your application for Wisconsin Street. I've been helping Tom out with these ten thou, twenty-ten street improvements, and, you know, then we're, been completing work orders for some of the private jobs.
Goodwill Industries, where we made the decision to not require curb along that one section of Seventeenth Street because we anticipated potential expansion and creation of the curbing. So now we've, they had cut asphalt, and they've sodded in, and they've patched asphalt back in. Do you think that's functioning for the flow of water as well as it's going to, or is this just kind of what we're stuck with now because of that decision we made?
Yeah, it's a, no, the work order will reflect, you know, because, you know, that's, having standing water is unacceptable, and so that'll be corrected.
Because it's got, it's got considerable standing water. Well, right now, they're watering almost constantly because of their sod, so it might be worse than it would be. It doesn't have time to perk anymore.
Yeah, and it's, it's a very flat road, so, you know, we're going to do the best we can to make do, but, you know, it would have been nice, an ideal world, to have the curb in, but that's the same token to rip it out in a couple of years isn't really practical either.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thanks, Chuck. Let's move on to new business, special assessments for the two thousand and ten sidewalk curb and gutter replacement project. The preliminary resolution is number twelve dash ten. And this is where the council declares its intent to exercise special assessment powers. We've got a list here, I think everyone that would be affected by this. Have they been notified already? We'll get a notice after we do this, okay? So what's your pleasure? Questions?
Move to suspend the rules.
There's a motion to suspend the rules towards adoption of.
Second.
Resolution. In a second, any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to suspend the rules is passed. Now you can consider adopting the resolution.
Move to adopt resolution twelve dash ten.
Second.
And there's a motion in a second. So any discussion on this?
I have a few questions.
Sure.
Some of these sidewalks are like six, seven, eight years old. What, what needs, I'm just kind of, do we know what needs to be done on each of these areas, or it, it seems like there'd be much other, more sidewalks in the city that might need work than something that's seven years old.
Yeah. Tom, why don't you be prepared to give a professional answer? I'll give you the amateur answer. Part of the reason we do these repairs is for safety and liability reasons, so oftentimes what's happened is we've got cracks that have led to be a trip and fall hazard. And while there's a certain amount of warranty, which isn't that long, is it like two years? If a sidewalk fails within the first two years, we'll generally talk to the contractor about it.
Yep, yep.
And some sidewalks where there aren't trees and roots in different situations, they can last for many years without trouble. It depends on subsoils. You tell her.
Well, you touched a lot of the things that could happen. Some of the times when there's construction in the area and there happens to be a truck drive, driving over it, there's damage to the sidewalk in those areas. Like the mayor said, that a lot of times the trees and roots have effect on them.
And I understand settling when you have the differences, but I just, is that, I mean, the markings that are on the sidewalks now, are those markings that Public Works did to determine which areas needed to be done, or?
The ones that are on the replacement program are these. There's also some other marks that were, are going to be taken care of through the other processes.
Through grinding.
Through grinding or the lifting.
So, you're asking some good questions, Mary. So the way our process works is, in the fall, when we do budget time, we will talk about a preliminary capital projects budget, and we'll preliminarily set some numbers for street improvements and sidewalk improvements and things for the following year. And then, as we get into the spring, summertime, we'll firm up those numbers.
Right.
And then we'll actually go out to bid. When we do the bid, the bid is done on a unit basis, so then, once we get the bids, Tom can figure out, okay, well, the council gave us a budget of sixty-eight thousand dollars, or whatever it is, for this year. Now, how many sidewalks can we actually fix for that? So they'll go out and they'll have identified a number of potential fixed sidewalks. Sometimes, when push comes to shove, we can't get them all done for what we budgeted. Or we may get more than we thought we could get done. And so then, we will go to make the actual list of what we're proposing to do, which has been done and is before you. After this, they'll all get notified, and there'll be a public hearing, and if they want to come and say, hey, that's just not right, I don't want it done, we'll listen to them, and we may or may not decide to do it anyway. Because ultimately, the safety concern is one for the city as a whole, and while they will be contributing towards the cost, we're still the decision maker. And so, you know, this will come back next time. I guess, will it be next time? Yeah. So that's the process. So it's kind of a, it's a multi-step, and this is one step down the line, and we're getting closer, so now you can see what is likely to get done. One of these, I point out, is to create a new sidewalk down from Second Street to the library.
Right.
All in favor, anyone else with questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. And the motions pass, so we'll have a hearing soon. Next, we've got special assessments for our curb and gutter replacements related to the two thousand and ten mill and overlay project. Similar, but slightly different.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
So this is resolution thirteen-ten. Any discussion on suspending the rules for thirteen-ten? Roll call, vote.
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passed. Now you can consider adopting the resolution.
Move to adopt resolution thirteen dash ten.
Okay, so the gist of this, Chuck, is that the road is bad, and the curb may or may not be, but there's some chunks of curb that need to get replaced. Is that about the way that goes?
Yeah, I would, um, if there are two involved this, other than maybe inspections?
So, the curb, there is some large commercial lots on that particular road. The post office is one. And then, from Crestview Drive to the south is another large portion of curb and gutter. So, in that, those areas there, the curb and gutter is in very poor condition. There's a lot of spalling of the concrete and cracking and things like that. In a project where we do mill and overlay, where we expect the life of the road to exceed ten to twelve years, it's just a really good idea to get the curb and gutter as good as, in condition as we can.
You know, sometimes you can't help it, but as a homeowner, sometimes you can have some say in whether that truck that wants to deliver something to your house or have work done. I had it happen one time with tree trimming. They wanted to bring the truck up over the sidewalk, and I said, no, I'd really rather not have you do that, because, is there any other way? Because sometimes, two or three years later, then that sidewalk is failing where it might not have. And, but other times, it just can't be helped. But, so here we are. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Communications from the mayor. I want to make one comment, not directed at any one particular situation or individual, but just kind of in general, that in a council, a mayor council form of government such as we have in the city here and elsewhere, and with the committee structures such as we have, the committees end up looking at a lot of details pertaining to the functioning of that department, but that doesn't mean that they become sort of a super manager of the department. So, that doesn't mean that whether you're a member of that committee or the chair of the committee, you're not giving directions on day-to-day staff operations, so that if the council has made a decision on some policy issue, which is our role, then try not to micromanage the departments. It shouldn't ever happen, but occasionally it does. If you have questions of them, that's fine, and if you have discussion, if you want to do information gathering, all good. But then, the thing to do, if there's some action step that you think should come out of it, is bring it back to your committee, have discussion. If there's something that you want to see done, it should go through the council, and then either Devon, in some cases, myself, or Devon, or the, the staff, department head will give direction as what should be done. If you have questions about what I'm talking about, I encourage you to, to talk with me. There's a section in the handbook for municipal officials that you've all got, which is on page 158 of the copy Jan has, which talks about this. And it's not a problem, but it's, it's, I think, something for us all to be aware of and keep in mind. It's easier for staff if they have one or at most two people giving them direction and not six or seven or eight. And that's all I have for tonight. Any council older person? City attorney? City administrator? Any other business for future agendas? Or ready to adjourn? Did I skip anything?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.